I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, with due dignity and reason, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, good evening. I'm Craig Cullerow.
Benson, Burges, Travis, Hayes, Myers, Williams.
Okay, let's go along with the agenda of roofing of our minutes. And I motion to approve May 1st, 2012, our special meeting and motion. Okay, comments? Craig Cullerow.
Benson, Burges, Travis, Hayes, Myers, Williams.
Okay, motion.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, that was a motion for two components.
May 1st, 2012, our special meeting.
I have access to the last vote yet. You asked for it, why aren't you voting yet? No, you can't not, you want there, you can vote. It's a matter of interest, I didn't know that we can actually vote, we have access for minutes. How do we do that? Can we do that soon enough? Because if we can't, then I could vote against all meetings. Probably ten years. Is he sure they look, he know, is he sure?
I asked your attorney for clarification, and I got his presentation that the trustee hates him, vote even that he has access, he has the right to vote.
In the past, we could not vote, and all of a sudden, we can vote. I don't think this is an offer, I actually know where they go.
There we go.
If the attorney is advisor, move on. Now, in motion to approve May 8th, 2012, the regular voting, motion. Comments? Craig Cullerow.
Benson, Burges, Travis, Hayes, Myers, Williams.
Okay, motion here. The motion to approve May 15th, 2012, the committee meeting, motion. Second. Comments?
Benson, Burges, Travis, Hayes, Myers, Williams.
Okay, let's go along to the motion here. Let's go to the recording portion, Bill Struck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All I have tonight is to remind everyone that village stickers are going to be due, displayed on their vehicles by June 30th by midnight. Otherwise, the stickers will double in price and by twenty issues. So please make sure that your village stickers are purchased and on your vehicle, not in your road department, but on your vehicles by midnight through 30. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Bill Snyder and Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Eight year package is trustee, nine fourth, summer work program is getting started, starting today. The village has been assigned two new ladies that are from high school, 206, local residents of South Village, recording an opportunity today. Next, ingredients in the package as well. South Village manager's bulk information, renewable, we all had a discussion about that last week. The sponsorships, if you so choose, are between 200 and 300, and there are others there, you can stick in directions how you want to proceed. But I want to provide you that information. The April collection report and financial statements are attached with review, comp tabbed made for the public, and the clerk work diligence on a separate sheet for the collective report, which I believe should be placed in your boxes. Lake Michigan project progress and plan is attached with review, with provisions from rocks engineering, the attorney firm, they have been made, and their corrections, as well as the devised plan is attached to the plan in your boxes. The energy companies are scheduled to be on the nineteenth, it will take two meetings. Mr. Pike and myself, Gerald, and I met with the camera person, we had one proposal, he had two initiatives on the journey for the nineteenth. The parks committee, we're still waiting in the backgrounds, and trust each other, they're actually trying to do a different way, they want to go to live scan to speed up this process, because other people are still waiting as well for it to come back in the state any bit. And so they're suggesting that I'll be bringing to the board for a different way to do these background checks, because they need a live scan. The old fingerprint ways is just way too old to know.
Don't we have the strike ones? Let me guess what they did.
Right, I'm allowed to do that for criminal activity, but for employees in this debt, I just received my box today, a letter of debt from this group, I wrote some recommendations, and I would be glad to talk to Chief Fox a little bit too now.
Because you know, we're talking to a couple officials, they get theirs back in one day, you want to find out how they do that?
How they do the live scan.
Yeah, I mean, get theirs back in one day, background check.
And we also have to, we had to renew our accounts, because one of our accounts actually had been deleted, and so we actually sent that in, they did not have any funding there.
And you never give me the answer, who was the other person?
I'm sorry, and I think the chief wanted to come in, or was it to you, could have let it get?
Whenever you use a picture, only use live scan for someone that you are arresting, not for employee persons. So when you send that, you got to hard, hard fingerprint them and roll them off the screen too, because they're not an employee. If you are a high employee, that'd be a different thing. But no, we should not use, they would hate us, because they would hate us for using a live scan for that. So we have to send them off. See, you got to send the element, everything has to go through the system to come back. But if you hard fingerprint, a live scan is if you don't know what that means, a live scan is you just walk up, put your hand down on the computer like this, and it's finished.
Yeah, well done again, when I did our background, my background check.
Yeah, but it should, it should be done, but when there's not police personnel or crime, it should be done on an old fashioned fingerprint card, where you print it, you roll, and that card is sent into the state. That's after that informant card, that's a different thing, you should not be doing it on a live.
Because I did mine, chief, against fingerprint on the card and on the live, and the information came back very quick. When I was talking to someone, the officials in the ICE, they were telling me the same that you can get it back in one day. I mean, if you guys didn't require how they're doing about getting it back in one day, it would be nice, but we've done it already, almost four months ago. Rather, I'd like to move forward at least by next week.
Well, you actually, you sent the cards down and everything, the bottom card, the bottom was, you didn't have, that accounts for like a pay, almost, just to give you examples, not what it actually is. And that money's pooled off that account, when the card went, we didn't have anyone in that account. So then we had to call Mohan, Mohan just made the check.
Do you know the name for being processed?
I don't, I don't know, I don't know what your name is. I just took care of the situation, but Mohan had to write the check, and he sent the cards back down off the checks, that was all it was. So that's how it was done, I believe, third, you asked me something like, oh, Mohan took the check, so we should have something back from them today at one. Yeah, they were pretty quick, but that's why, they're doing this for every community in Illinois. If you were down there, it's very sad, like everybody else.
No, I think it was a little bit, a per card, they did a live scan, and that came back within less than a day or so, when you got it from security. I don't understand why.
They should, they should do a live scan, just for a per card. It's just because if, it's.
I don't understand why that's possible, because. Because the state has. Otherwise, they're doing it, even for the school district, when it's sent over there to Lansing, the same place will scan you, live scan, they get the background check grabbed it, I don't see how you can get anything for it.
Because the state has guidelines for what you can live scan for and what's not. The live scan machine does get set up for criminal activities, for criminals, not for employment. So if you're going to do employment, you have to have a whole other thing, another asset that says, you can't use live scan in this system, because the state has the guideline of what you can live scan for, and employment is not one of those things.
Where does a legal official get to see that guideline?
You can go around here, it's not that I picked up this guideline by the state, right? It's not that Fox makes up, this is the guideline by the state. And when they do that, they'll come out and they will mess with our, with our lead certifications. See, all the most important, the lead certification, when you run anybody, that deals with the lead certification, okay?
Where, where are we? I mean, are we close to getting these big, tight? Are we, are we, everything that's been submitted in there?
Everything has been submitted, and we're ready, everything has been submitted.
Okay, thank you. All right, that's in your report?
I have one more item to report. The department has met in reference to the parade with the clerk, and our next meeting is exposed into detail, and on tonight, there is an item on the end of the emergency parade. Thank you.
Okay.
You said something about a meeting, about it's going to take two, two weeks, I didn't hear what it was.
Our next meeting for the parade.
No, prior to this, I'm sorry, I didn't hear, you said there was something, was it the honor?
The energy meeting.
Oh, the energy meeting should take two.
Two, it's because it happens to be people who want to come and present, it'll be over two committee meetings, and you mentioned the honor, I did put something in everyone's boxes, one of them's your email, from the auditor on the stairs of the office.
Okay, I just wasn't sure if that's what I was hearing, if that just came into the audience, but I just heard you guys.
It happened.
Maybe you didn't know that, so, sorry.
Okay, let's move on to the bill of attorney, Ms. Carmichael.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll report.
Thank you. Our bill of attorney, Madam Burns.
Thanks, Mayor, nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. How good is engineer, Mr. Sutern?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I attended the IEP demand sampling wells one and two today, everything went smoothly. IEP is supposed to share their results with South Village when they get them. Also, we revised our Lake Michigan water allocation application per the IDNR comments that we received, and we submitted that to IDNR today. Also, we submitted a supplemental information package to IEP that modified our project plan. Project plan was modified based on those IDNR comments, so we're trying to keep all of our information consistent across the regulatory agencies that we're dealing with. And then an update on the quiet zone, there was a sixty day waiting period for regulatory agency comments that just closed, good news was, there was no adverse comments received, so we kind of breezed by that. Next steps, we have to do a traffic count for both intersections, that's required by the federal river administration. We have to do topographic surveys of both intersections, that's required by IDOT, and the good news on that is, that's all paid for by ICN, not a village expense. And then finally, we're going to wait for IDOT to come in and do the resurfacing on Torres. And that concludes my report, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sutern.
If you got, if they give you a date when I got, they start doing, or they just, I know they said January, I mean, June, so, here it is.
We haven't gotten a date, but your information's the best information we've gotten so far. Don't know anything more.
Okay, thank you.
All right, let's move to the mayor's report, just a couple of reminders, the lounge that the wives got there at the old liquor store, or cash liquor, those kind of, I'm told to go in there, and they're really on, pretty close to opening. It looks good in there, and in the lounge there, so they're pretty close to opening, I would say in a couple of weeks, they should be good. Subway, I've been talking with those people there, they've pretty much got everything that they need, their own truck, the pod, moving the storage paper, I think the village manager put something in the custody box to let us know where, I think we are with them. They're still pretty much in, going to be coming into the village as well, we know. So those three are pretty much still on board there for coming into the village. The next thing we have is the collector report that we invented, the citizen that's been asking for a while, so finally, we got Mr. Mohan, from the finance director, village manager, and the village clerk that's working on this form, so we can have this information for our citizen. So for the month of April, 2012, the village has collected property taxes, in property taxes, seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars and five cents, other taxes, a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars and eighty-four cents, there were no bond proceeds collected. We have licensing permit collected for the month of April, thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars, zero, seven cents, I'm sorry, seven cents. Fees and other services, a hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-four cents. Rents that were collected were nineteen thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars and twenty-nine cents. Transfer stamps were also eighty-nine thousand, a hundred and fifty-two dollars and sixty-one cents. Enters, seventy dollars and twenty-eight cents. Miscellaneous, twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars and fourteen cents. Making a grand total collected for the month of April, five hundred and thirty-two dollars, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and two cents. Thank you, and that's all I have.
Mr. Mayor, you gave a report on the different businesses. As I stated last board meeting, I'm trying to ask you again, are you going to continue to circumvent, in other words, are you going to continue, because I did go out to the businesses, and I thought it was part of economic development, but if you go to report, it ended up needing to be redundant. So I do have a couple of questions about the pods, did they say where they're going to locate, or where they want to locate?
Yeah, they're going to be located in the, at the industrial park of the DDP department.
The building's former?
No, they, you then, I believe, how many thousand square, I think they're going to be leasing from DDP.
Because I was just wondering where, in perspective, where they're going to be located around the building, because I had heard them saying, but like I said, I go around, but if you're going to continue to keep doing this, it makes sense for me to do it. And also, with the lounge, Mr. Mayor, I was there also, and were you aware that they want to open up a beer garden?
Yeah, I think I mentioned that at the first time, when they, my report, that Jeff and Chris, the official brought the report here, that sometime later on, Jeff and they used it, and it was fair time in the fact.
You know, we can't do that, because it's a residential area behind that.
Okay, well, that, would it be raised to the board?
The reason why I'm saying, Mr. Mayor, was told to them that they may have, they may possibly do it, and I told them, in fact, that they couldn't, because behind there, they bump up next to people's homes, and they can't have music and beer and things like that at all hours of the night, twelve o'clock, because it is a residential area, even though it's not the front part, that's why Towns Town doesn't have anything in the back of their business, because they have it in the front, because they got the barrier of the building. But they're going to have it back there, then, you know, that's why I was saying, if we're going out there, giving information that's conflicting, you need to do something, because if I'm saying one thing, you're saying another, why should I even be doing it? Because that's not right. If you're leading the businesses on thinking that they can do that, thinking they can do that, then that's wrong, because then when they come back and say, well, I thought we could do this, we could open it up, I thought we could have a beer garden. I thought we could have a beer garden. So that's why I was just asking, if you want to, Mr. Mayor, it's your call, if you want to continue to give the report for economic development, then fine, and I, you know, I'll just, I'll just, you know, whatever. But if I'm out there talking to them, and asking them, and they're asking me a perfect question, and like I said about pods, I went over there, I didn't see anything, I didn't see anyone, I haven't heard anything, where they're going to open it, I thought it was going to be the one on Torres Avenue, they were going to try to get into that.
Well, trustee, I think I made a report that there's another business that's going to be leasing the facility over on Turner, has nothing to do with pod. I went over and looked at it, and I think I made that in my report. And they went over and looked at that facility, but they was unable to use it because of the number of different posts that were in the building there. So they were, that's why they found, we were able to agree on using the DDP project.
Okay, my final question, Mr. Mayor, this is what I'm asking, I asked it last time. If you're going to do this, why do you have a person to try to check economic development? First of all, you're not letting, I don't know anything about the, only reason why I know about what's going on now, is I go out there and talk to them, but no one has told me, you haven't said anything, emailed me, anything, that this is what's going on. I'm not saying that you have to report to me, I don't even know, I'm just saying as far as communicating. If you're going to continue to do that, then okay, fine, then, you know, what, why, I don't want all the elected officials bombarding the business, that's not good. Tell them the business is one thing, and then they come back and hear another thing. But if you at least let us know, let me know what's going on, if you choose not to do that, then that's fine. If you choose not to let me know that you're talking to the businesses like you just said, you're talking about putting the business so and so, and such and such, that's the first time I heard about it. So I'm just asking, if you're going to continue with the economic development report, please let me know, and if that's the case, then okay, fine. I just need to know that, sir, I don't want to go out there and be redundant, I don't want to go out there and tell a business something other than what you told them. If you told them that they got a beer garden back there, then okay, fine, because that's what was told to me. So I just ask, I'm not going to go out there and go against what you've already told them or whatever, but I just need to know, if that's what you want to do from now on, because this is the second time that you gave me an economic development report when it comes to your barrel report. I mean, we meet every second, two, Thursday of the month here at seven o'clock, if you want to come to the meeting, fine, but if you don't want to do that, and you want to do freelance, I just need to know, Mr. Mayor, so I can let my committee know that this is what's going on, sir.
I see, I'm going to be hearing the report that I get, so if you don't want to hear a report, then.
What's that, I want to, sir?
If you don't want to do anything with, 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 if you don't want to.
No, it's it, now you said you put.
Then I relieve you from that duty.
No, you can't relieve.
I relieve you from the duty.
You can't relieve me from that duty, I'm saying.
I'm going to make the report.
So you're going, okay, then why?
The report that I get from acting on the duty, from the, from the business out there, I'm going to report it.
Okay, sir, you don't have to get religion involved, I'm just asking the question, sir.
I'm letting you know.
You don't have to get religion, I'm just asking the question.
I'm going to make the report.
So therefore, you're going to make the report for just, for just this committee, right?
They told me about information, I'm sharing.
Then what's wrong with passing it on to the people that you have a committee for, sir? You have a committee, and someone came in and asked you about something to do with human relations, you're going to take care of that and circumvent your committee? And someone has something to do with any other community that we have, you're going to take care of and circumvent your committee? That's what I thought you had, that's called communication, sir, and something that you have stated from the beginning, open and honest development, and transparency. If you're going to keep it away from someone, and they come here, and I guess, your report, there's other things you do besides go out there and look at the existing business, and other businesses like that, there's other things to do in economic development that you should know, but I'm just asking you for communication, sir, but if you feel that you want to communicate.
All these are new business.
If you don't want to communicate, sir.
I don't know this business, you've been over.
What, what did you bring in?
I don't know, I don't know what's happened, bro.
Okay, now, okay.
There's something that you brought in.
Okay, and you brought in what, sir?
It's all really business right there, that I talked to the people that got.
Oh, you brought it in? They didn't come here asking, you went out there and got there?
They come, yeah, some of them came in asking, some that I went out and asked.
Okay, I don't see that, because that's not what they told me.
I'm asking you, man.
That's not what they told me.
What you brought in, you said.
Okay, now, you're, okay, I guess you're trying to take it now.
Oh, with what I had here, I mean, what have you brought in here?
Okay, I can't.
So I'm going to make the report.
I can't, I can't break nothing in here with this. With this going on, everything, you're like, I can't break anything in here.
We will move on.
Okay, I'm not through, sir.
All right.
I'm not through, I just, I asked you a question, and the third thing for Subway, you stated that Subway wants, is coming in, have they done all of their due diligence? Since you gave the report, sir, I'm just asking, have they done and taken care of all of their due diligence?
I did say they're on schedule.
Have they taken care of their due diligence?
They're not on, they haven't opened yet, sir. They're on schedule to open, they've had everything, they've got moved in the right direction, and come to Sherwood, come the time this week, to make sure they're on schedule. So, yeah, they're on schedule.
I wasn't asking Sherwood, sir, I was asking you, since you took care of that, I was asking you, have they taken their due diligence, have they done the things that they're supposed to do to get the certification that they're supposed to have from this village, that's what I was asking.
They're on schedule and everything.
On schedule.
Before they open, trustee, they will have everything to be on schedule, it's open. We'll make sure of that, if you have any concerns about it.
Mr. Mayor, I'm making motion to recess this meeting.
What's the purpose of this?
I agree, but it.
What's the purpose, Mr. Mayor?
I'm trying to explain.
Can we hold on that?
No, I don't want to hold on anything.
Mr. Mayor, I think for the safety of the residents.
We can't hear you.
For the safety of the residents and everyone inside this room, you know, this department has said that there are no serious threats, and I think it's in the best interest of our community and residents that are here to recess this meeting with further notice, so we're going to leave in case the threats are legitimate.
All, all of us, Joe. Uh, my, my, there's a issue.
Yes, sir.
Can you elaborate a little bit?
No, sir, everything's under control, you guys can, until you're ready, we have personnel outside, you're fine.
Thank you.
There's a motion to the second floor, and I think we should, because this motion is second, I was also in comment, that if this is in fact what happened, it took multiple people to whisper about it, I'm concerned by the police chief didn't feel the need to come and tell the village manager, I think she should have been informed, and I also think at that time, following the chain of command, that the village manager would have the opportunity to pull their side, to pull him, and I think it's something that he should have known, and as a warrant, it's a decision that we needed to make. I don't think it's something that should have been unformed to end us, because it should have had a tape. All of us kind of looking around, asking why the doors are closed, why he's roaming the halls, the attorney has to get up and go talk to the police chief, that's not professional.
Moral of the story.
But regardless, exactly, regardless of the motion is second, I'll force me follow.
Okay, Mr. Ball, any other comments?
I'm sorry, I was a second, I'm sorry. I'm second.
Comments?
Mr. Mayor, the chief of police has stated that everything is clear and secure, and if that's the case, Mr. Mayor, then we should continue this meeting, why you allow that to be, it's a tape, it's a nice tape, the chief, he said he has men out there, whatever case it may be, we got to save the sound, and we should continue on this meeting.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question from the attorney, the police chief has asked the doors to be locked, because this is an open meeting, and the, it's supposed, all doors are supposed to be made open during an open meeting, or on my clarification, on the record, that it's okay to lock the doors to the building during an open meeting? And that's another reason why they're calling this motion, just some people aren't there.
I don't know if I'm sure, but I think what, everyone is just checking people are coming through the doors.
Yes.
So, the attorney is definitely, the chief is saying, that kids are all clear, and everything is safe, and continue while you're doing your job, I'm questioning if we shut down.
It's up to the board, I mean.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, if it's not for trustee's, our state, let's consider the residents' safety. If there's a possibility something to happen, then let's take a few minutes of time, and then let the police department go and control and do what they got to do, and then agree with me.
Mr. Mayor, okay, okay. Mr. Mayor, I remember a time when this boy didn't have one police up here, they did everything they could to refuse. And all of a sudden, there's a big, big key.
You got a bolt out of the floor.
It's just a little. Stand at the draw.
This boy did, and as a matter of fact, trustee Wim was one of the main ones who was anxious for not to have police, police presence in our meetings.
That's not a question. Now, all of us, we can trust the, uh, severe, please hold on.
We got to do.
Witness, please, sir.
Call for a vote. Mayor, call for a vote. Call out order.
Trustee, sir. Your honor, your honor, trustee.
Call out order.
Your honor.
Call out order.
Your honor.
This is part of order, let's go, call. Come on, roll. Don't mess around with people's lives, and their safety. Call, the roll. Due to the serve and protect and the safety of the people in this public, we need to do it now, sir. Call the vote.
Any other comments?
Well, this, this way, the police chief can't, as we agree with me, the police chief has to wait to check everybody, and do about the, the.
Any other comments? Craig Cullerow.
Clarification, are we recessing for the day, or recessing for until further notice? I didn't hear the notice.
Until further notice.
What does that mean, Mr. Mayor, further notice? What does that really mean? That mean ten hours from now, or when Hank says so, he wants to be in America, is it when Hank says so, or when this, this young man here says so, or is it when trustee Wim says so, we declare, how to define, what does that mean, uh, to further notice?
I agree, that we need to be trying whether it's going to be in a couple hours. I agree, that we need to decide whether it's gonna be a couple hours, a couple minutes, uh, so.
I don't know.
I think that due to the nature of what was threatened, I think that we need to recess for ten.
We need to.
Wait, I, I, I'm not gonna, we can call it now, hold on, sorry.
I agree, we're recessing.
Now, but, but, hold on, so the motion would be, can you re, resend the motion because there, we, we have the color noted, so I need to resend this motion and, uh, and resend the second.
I, I think that we probably should resend it, it would just be noted to tell the village manager what we.
I amend the motion to begin the resess for a meeting.
I can't, I'm out.
Mr. Mayor, can I say one more thing?
Yeah.
Okay, can we at this time also set up a next meeting, because we have to have this meeting sometime this week, so is there a way that we can make that, also in that amendment, schedule this Thursday night or another night? Okay.
Hold on, we don't get you.
Can, can we, can we, in the process of making that motion, can we maybe say that we're going to, uh, uh, recess tonight's meeting until it has to be forty-eight hours notice, let's just say seven forty-five on Thursday? If, if that's agreeable to the board, I mean, rather than just leave, I'm gonna need to take care of business at some point.
And I need a motion to.
I already said my second, we were sending the original motion.
The, the meeting minutes are intended to be reposted on Monday, or on the meeting date, it does not have to be part of this motion. We're, we're recessing, and the amount of time that we're staying here, that I can't do this more to put the residents in danger, we know that right now in Springfield, Washington, whenever there's a threat, what do they do? They clear the chain of, and make sure the situation's safe. We have a, a chief out there monitoring, like, what's the possibility, uh, because there is a, there is a.
Okay, let's go with the motion.
So we should add, call for a vote.
All right, I, I need the motion.
We, the original motion, the original second, all we need to vote.
I'm ready, call it out.
Benzel, Burges.
Yeah.
Chavez.
Yes.
Fires. Boys.
And what's the.